That was fine.
Right.
I actually have a nameplate.
You do.
Yeah.
How'd she do that?
I don't know.
Pretty proud of you.
Dan, thank you.
It's a needed piece of equipment. Expensive as it is.
Call of work county commissioners meeting in order today is October 24th, 2022. Sheriff, please. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is a public hearing for the matter of petition to vacate portions of the right of way at Bayberry Drive and Framewood Estates in Warwick County, Indiana. So make a motion to exit the meeting and go into a public hearing. Need a motion to recess the commissioners meeting?
Yes.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Now, do we need to motion into the public hearing as well?
It's all part of the same motion.
No, he'll.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Jared Memmering with Morley. I'm representing the Yorks on this vacate petition.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor or against? Let the record tell that no one is here to speak for or against.
This was advertised in the standard. They did send notices to all the neighbors in that subdivision and adjacent. And we did receive the letters back from the utilities that they were fine with their request.
One we saw on drainage board a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Yeah, there's already a drive on there. So help me understand. So we approved the vacation here. So does half of this belong to lot 23 and the other half belong to lot 22?
Once it's vacated, yes.
I'm good with it. So we got to.
What's our ordinance number?
The ordinance would be 24.
Closing here.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay, back in the commissioners meeting here. Christine, I'm sorry, what's the ordinance number?
It was 24.
24. Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the vacation of the right of way of Bayberry Drive and Framewood Estates, ordinance number 2022-24.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is area plan.
We have a request for the release of surety commercial entrant C 21-112 for the near taproom at 8239 High Point Drive. Jason T. Elliott is the managing member. We're holding $2,376 in escrow, guaranteeing the drive completion, and they've had one year. This surety expires November 15th of 2022. Another county engineer visited the site, and we do not have a sign off that construction's been completed.
So.
Steven.
So we're not. So Bobby's not looked at this?
I have looked at it.
Oh, okay.
It's not in compliance with the approved commercial driveway permit construction. They should have removed the curb and gutter and built a lesser curb and gutter, but.
Okay, so.
The curb and gutter is gone. They just paved to the edge of the pavement after they removed the gutter. Bobby was not going to sign off on that.
So the motion is not to release the surety, correct?
Yes, yes, and we'll hold it for, this is good for another year.
I make a motion not to release the surety.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries.
This will give them another year to correct the matter, return it for the approved commercial driveway permit that was on file.
Our next item were street construction plans, PP 22-11, Stall Road Apartments, PUD. This one, they are asking to table this another two weeks. I know plans have been submitted again, but they have not agreed on the passing blister.
Make a motion to take over to November 14th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And we have a sidewalk acknowledgement, Berkshire Phase Three Macon Corporation by Daniel Hubler, President. It's Belmont Drive at 980 lineal feet. They've had three years, and the county engineer has visited this site. And I believe they are willing to sign off on this one. Is that right, Steve?
That's correct. You should have a copy of that. I signed off on half of Bobby. We visited the site last week. Bobby's not able to be at this meeting. I signed off at his replacement.
All good?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the sidewalk acknowledgement.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, that's all the area plan commission has?
Thanks, Molly.
Okay, next order of business is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. What's the date on that?
The 10th.
October 10th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next order of business is our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I have the consent agenda, and on that consent agenda is the county auditor claims voucher report dates 10/12 through 10/25/2022 and payroll date of 10/24/2022. Trim work completion by call up construction in the commissioners meeting room, weights and measures monthly report, 9/16 through 10/15 of 2022, the Alpha Laser contract for the new stormwater copier, the Fiddler Technologies contract for the clerk's office, Keller Schrader VMware service agreement, and the treasurer's monthly report ending September 2022.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay, next order of business is county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have is would be a provisional approval of an interlocal agreement with NDOT with respect to the State Road 66 at Worth intersection. This has been back and forth for a while, and they've recently sent a revised version. I'm going to hand out here in a second. This has been reviewed by economic development. Steve Rowley is here if he wants to offer anything else. But as far as I understand, both economic development and us as council feel like the agreement's in a good position to be signed. And there might be one or two additional like pagination changes that might need to be made tomorrow. But all we would need tonight is your provisional approval of this interlocal agreement, and we will get it signed by you and sent back up.
Steve, why don't you come up and maybe just give the elevator version of this to the other two commissioners? I know I've not read the emails exchanged today, but I have, we've been in meetings about all day today, so I've not had a chance to even talk to them about the 66 and that work.
Okay, so the short version is we've been working on this intersection since June of 2019, after we were given some U-turn option that was unacceptable to Warwick County and to the stakeholders. We've gone back and forth a whole bunch. This interlocal has been back and forth for about 14 months now, and the final version of it is acceptable to economic development for what we thought our commitment was to this upgrade. Dan has been on the economic development boards since that time, so he's been the commissioner. It's been most heavily involved with this intersection. This interlocal, we wanted to strike some language from it, which we thought put too much of a risk on Warwick County. All we're doing is helping to contribute the cost of any right of way that is needed for the construction if that right of way is not donated by the landholders. And some of the language put any and all things that might cause federal highway to pull out funding is that Warwick County would make up the difference in funding. So that risk is not acceptable to anybody because we're talking four, eight, 10, 12 million dollars, depending on the latest NDOT quote. And we're happy with the intersection we're getting. We're happy with the agreement. We're happy with some of the concessions that were made in this agreement, and the redevelopment commission with it being in the TIF is happy with the commitment for right of way.
So not only has Herb Davis, economic development attorney, looked at this, Todd and John's eyes has been on this. So I've read the highlighted changes, and I'm, you know, my main concern was the liability, you know, that exposed Warwick County too, which was absolutely ridiculous. So if all that's been addressed by legal, then I'm good with it. And Steve, you're good with it as staying because you've been the tip of the spear.
Yeah, I mean, if we strike it, sign it back and say, here's a signed agreement with the stuff removed that we don't like.
So this has taken out that ridiculous amount of money that they were trying to hold us liable for?
They put it in there that they could ask the auditor to stay to take it out of our highway funds if we refuse to pay that amount of money and some other language that we just can't take that kind of a risk.
And they were, they may have language in there holding us responsible for contractors and maybe.
Their status.
Yeah, their employee certifications, I think, and all that stuff.
I think I would say it's a boilerplate contract, like if we were actually partnering on construction of an intersection. But we are not hiring anyone. We're not constructing anyone. We're not lifting a shovel. And so all of that was in there where all we were was fostering some funds to contribute towards right of way. And so we wanted to strike all that other stuff that was really not applicable for what we're.
John, we're okay with this?
Yeah.
Is there any feeling whether they're going to find this acceptable?
I hope so.
I think they will.
Good.
My opinion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Thank you.
Did you have the EMS?
I can't.
I think we'd like to talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
Pretty much.
You want me to bring that up?
Yes, please.
And one thing that's not listed but is ready for discussion is the latest version of the emergency medical services agreement that's being worked through with Ascension. And I have a draft version here, but I want to discuss or communicate with anybody.
So I'd just like to open up the initial discussion and the fact that, you know, we've been talking about revising the contract that we already have with Ascension EMS for some time. I've heard various stories from different counties in southwest Indiana and how I believe Martin County is without an ambulance service now. Knox County, Indiana, found themselves in a position where they had to fire up their own EMS service. And so, you know, it's a very serious conversation when Warwick County is faced with, you know, an existing contract that goes for two years. In other words, the final two years of a 10-year contract, and we're getting a great deal. But we're also agreeing to create a sixth ambulance, which is sorely needed. We're without ambulances every day. And so I feel like we have to, you know, sit back and reexamine where we're at, not like some of the folks that are here today, starting with Tony O'Neil, to come up and explain what we're talking about today.
Tony O'Neil, Warwick EMS manager here for Warwick County. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I want to tell you how much I value this relationship that we have with Warwick County. We've had the honor and the ability to serve as your 911 provider since 1976, and that goes really way back from Warwick Hospital just actually initially started it. Over the years, we have seen substantial growth in the county, not only in medical facilities, but hospitals and communities itself, housing communities. And we've seen our volume run to a point now that we've probably in the last 10 years went from 4,000 to almost 8,000 runs a year now that we're doing. We're finding ourselves now more where we either don't have an ambulance available for 911 calls, or we have delayed response times because we've got to pull another ambulance out of the area of the county to come down. So it's much needed to get the six ambulance going. And I think what I would say with the funding is I, over the summer, I had an opportunity to meet with several of the county council members and the commissioners off and on and actually show them the books and show them where we are financially in the county and operating the service and the loss that we take now. So, and that's just with five trucks. That wasn't including adding the six trucks. So what we're asking for is Ascension's not out to make a net profit on anything. We're just trying to cover the cost of what it costs to run the service in the county and provide excellent coverage for the county and add this sixth truck in the same time, so.
Tony, I've heard numbers from other counties that are in the millions of dollars to run their ambulance service, and those are smaller counties. Do you have any idea if we had to fire up our own ambulance service tomorrow, what that annual cost would be?
That, I mean, I could give you a ballpark, but I would say you're in the millions of dollars. There's a lot of cost that, a lot of labor cost that Ascension takes on that most counties would have to pay for if you were running it on your own. Technical support, liability, insurance, malpractice insurance, a lot of veritables in there that are covered by Ascension that the county doesn't even see. So if you were to go out on your own to hire a medical director and fund six trucks and I would say you would be in the millions.
Tony, how many people do you have employed to support your operation here?
We have about 40 employees. We have, I think, 30, my number girl behind me, I'm going to say she's probably 34, 35 full-time and five or six part-time.
That would be the capital M.
Right.
I think, you know, all of us, Tony, we all realize that we need another ambulance, that's six ambulance, it's a must. I think at this point, you know, we're all on board. It's just a matter of handling out the details of the contract and working that out. I think you have the support of all of us.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, that's in our last meeting, we talked about, you know, I think the county made a counter offer, and then we submitted one back to you and hoping to get this voted on tonight so we can move forward on hiring. It'll take us, I shared last month, it'll take us two, three months to get six new people to cover this truck. So it's important that we can kind of move forward and start on that.
You know, I'll kind of repeat the words that I've said in conversations throughout the day here, and I know you have some guests and some leadership from Ascension with you. You know, when this contract was probably started, it was with St. Mary's, an organization ran by the diocese.
Yes.
And I don't mean anything terrible by this. It's kind of a little bit of a Sparti electric remark, but at the end of the day, the Ascension folks are for-profit business, and they're probably not as nice as the nuns. And if we don't take care of the issue that exists of you guys being in severe red numbers, I'm afraid that this is going to get pulled out from underneath us, and I do not want to be faced with that.
Yeah. Well, just for the record, Ascension is a non-for-profit organization, so it is a non-for-profit.
Okay.
If you would vote on the contract tonight, we'll still have a loss this year running the service. So this doesn't break even for us. We're willing to incur some of that cost because, again, we've had this relationship for a number, many, many years with you guys. So again, we're not trying to break even. We're just trying to get us out of the hole a little bit so we can operate and operate this six trucks successfully.
Refresh my mindset on the timeline of when, I think you already have the truck ordered, correct?
Truck is ordered, yes.
Then you'll need to begin to advertise for folks to operate it.
Yes, sir.
Begin to outfit the truck with everything it needs.
Yes.
And then, I know Chad's here, when would that truck would become stationed, that Liberty Station?
Well, again, it's all dependent on when the station opens, but I've also talked with Chad about maybe utilizing the space at the Paradise Station to, if we needed to get it up sooner, you know, we could possibly use some space over there to get it running and operating prior to the new station opening. But Chad can enlighten us on that a little more.
No, I'm sorry.
Don't chat.
Chad Bennett, Ohio Township trustee. I just kind of want to echo what Tony said and what you all know, that the need is great. We represent 45,000 people in Ohio Township, and unfortunately, that's where all the calls are happening. But this ambulance not only stationed there, it's going to help the overall county out. And I think that's a bigger picture. And to Terry's point, costs are crazy, but, you know, I think this is a very good deal that the county's got, and hopefully with a good partnership, you can continue that. And then to the point about the station, you know, Ohio Township's willing to work with whatever. If that truck goes online beforehand, our tentative completion date of our new station is at the end of the first quarter of next year. So in that, by April 1, we're hoping to be online. Now, where that falls in, and EMS and all that is very fluid, but, you know, I've told Tony that we're able to, you know, try and work out something. Having two ambulances on the same station's not the best idea for coverage, but it beats not having the ambulance online. That's a good thing. And maybe during the daytime, that ambulance can follow the truck that went out previously so that we're not down to zero ambulances or areas where they're moving around. But that's for him to decide. So we're all aboard with it. We're also on board with the commissioners on working out an ILA for that sixth truck to be housed in the Liberty Station, and that's something that John and I've had, or Andrew and I've had discussions on. So we're ready to move forward with that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any comments on the contract itself?
The only thing is, and this is something that Andrew and Todd have had their eyes on more than I have, so qualifying, I'm about to say with that. I think that what I understand to be the final piece of the puzzle is just the payment structure beginning 2023, 2024, 2025. As far as I know, that's kind of the one issue that, it's a small issue. I mean, a few numbers to iron out, but that's what, I came to this meeting understanding is not being finalized yet. And so if you, after reviewing the latest proposal, are comfortable with the numbers they proposed, then we can take action on it. Or if you want an opportunity to refresh your memory on it, you know, this can be something that is, you know, approved contingent upon final determination of those numbers and proceed that way, and so that we can, you know, get that communication back, get approved without having necessarily waited for another two week period because those understanding, we understand that's the final piece of puzzle you put in. All other material items have been agreed upon. And again, it's just ironing out the installments in 2023, 2024, 2025.
Okay. Acknowledging that this is in fact more money than what we would be scheduled to pay in the last two years of the contract. However, you know, the whole purpose of the public safety local option income tax was to fund public safety, and EMS was part of that plan. So just want to acknowledge that fact. What's the term of the contract?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was just going to say what it is. It's just renewing the 10-year. I think the other thing I'd like to say, Mr. President, is, you know, I sent the counterproposal to you guys over a week ago, I think, to give you guys time to do this. I think last month, and again, not trying to put a pressure on anybody, but the clock ticks, and every day that goes by, week goes by, is more time that we're not moving on anything. And so I would just, I would just ask you guys to consider tonight a vote.
Understood. Commissioner, any other questions, comments?
No, you kind of took, you know, the, you know, the local income option tax was part of the discussion, and we've been discussing this a lot. You know, I just, understanding it's a, it's a probably, you know, to me, a contract is between two parties and it has to work for both parties. And ultimately, my concern is, is that, you know, if we had to look at another option of a provider or go out and start our own, we're in the neighborhood of millions with a capital M. And while, you know, I got a sticker shock because of the one ambulance, and Tony did invite us in and go over those numbers, and when you got to see those numbers, it kind of puts it in perspective what costs are and what Tony is kind of dealing with now. And none to the fault of Tony, that's called growth, and which is good. Warwick County is growing, and we're charged, the board of commissioners is charged with that responsibility, providing EMS service. So while this is a contract, I think that obviously, or don't think it cost us more money, I think we all knew, everybody in the room knew we was going to have to be paying more, and that was part, one of the part of the selling points of the lit tax to help with that. So I still like a deal, but if we were to have to go out and do this on our own, I think we're getting a deal even at these numbers. However, I'm not opposed to the other two commissioners to approving this based on, you know, maybe we get hammered out the fine details, because I think we're close. I think we're close enough to where we can, you know, we can get something hammered out.
I would agree with that. I mean, I was thinking earlier that we should, you know, I would approve it contingent on our attorneys hammering out the details on the payment options and future payments, I guess.
Anything else?
No.
I'll entertain.
Wait a minute, sheriff wants to.
Go ahead, sheriff.
Sheriff Mike Wilder. I don't want to get into the pressure or into the contract. That's not my decision, but I would like to point out, I've been at the sheriff's office for 26 years, handled the 911 center the past several years. Warwick EMS has been a great partner, Tony specifically, when he sits in the room to deal with, not only just when we're communicating about public safety, but also with when our jail, with our officers, they've gone out of their way to help us with blood draws, different things. So, and everybody in here knows the need for the sixth ambulance. So like I said, I'm not here to pressure, but I do want to talk about their partnership. I didn't realize you said 1976, that they've been partnered that long, but I've been here 26 years, but the last several, especially with Tony and Esha, the different groups working with them. You know, like I said, it is for the attorneys to draw out the money, financial ends of it, but I hope and look forward to keep continuing, get to work with Tony and Warwick EMS. EMS and Ascension. So just kind of from our side of the law enforcement and through the 911 center things, wanted to at least give my two cents.
Sheriff, not to not take long, get the conversation too long, but if you had to begin to dispatch an entirely new service, what kind of chaos would that throw in your day?
I don't even know how, I mean, I don't know how we even get up and started. They've got mobiles in their trucks, the communication that we now have and Tony and them, the work they come in with dispatch, they do the call. So you know, the ambulance are placed out, so the response times is as minimal as we can make them, meaning the need for that sixth truck. And it's kind of Chad hit on, when one goes out, they move. That's all the statistics that they have and show and we give to them through 911 where ambulances are needed and by call volumes and the people. I mean, nobody, whether they live in Lindville or Newburgh, needs to wait more than 10 or 11 minutes for an ambulance or it should be less, but I mean, it doesn't matter if you're in the northern part of the county, just because there's less people, the southern parts, there's more, they do their job to try to keep the ambulances balanced so that everybody gets that same, you know, response times. It's not easy and, you know, when everybody knows we're going to need one ambulance the next two hours or four ambulances or the next, you know, one accident may take three ambulances. So they do an excellent job and I just wanted to give my two cents because I have some experience with them and got to work with Tony quite a bit and them, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I see, I was going to say, I see other faces out here. Come on up. Mr. Sailor, second.
Mike Wilson, Warwick County resident. Your contract, that's up to you guys, but here's what I see happened three and a half years ago. EMS was really busy, five ambulances, they're scattered everywhere, they're all out of town on different runs throughout the county. My father's heart stopped. His D5 unit went off seven times at home and I waited on an ambulance from Scott Township for 32 minutes to get to downtown Newburgh. So I think Tony's needing that sixth truck really bad.
I agree. Thank you, sir. Stephen?
Everybody else is talking, I might as well too. Stephen Byers, Boonville Fire Chief. Just to reiterate what Tony said, we are seeing large call volumes. We're starting to see more and more serious accidents that are involving multiple patients where we're having to get, you know, more than one ambulance on scene. And I can tell you, we looked into, I guess it was the previous contract when they were looking at bringing, possibly bringing another service in years ago. We knew kind of what, what would happen there and the quality, the way it would go. So we did look at getting some prices together, what it would cost for us to run one ambulance out of our station. And to be able to get the paramedics, run one ambulance and get everything we needed for one ambulance is well over a million dollars just for us to get up and running. And that wasn't continuing to keep going. So, you know, I think, I mean, you guys have tough decisions ahead of you every day, but I think you guys will make the right decision here ultimately. And I mean, I would encourage you to, or ask you to please consider getting this passed so they can get the ball rolling and start with hiring the paramedics and EMTs that they need moving forward with that.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
I'd like to say one more thing, if you don't mind, commissioners. Eight years ago, when St. Mary's signed this initial contract and the county kind of stepped out of it, it was costing the county a million dollars at that time to, eight years ago, a million dollars to run five trucks. That did not include capital. That was what was operating expense for that. So you fast forward eight years and you're going to add a sixth truck and we're, you know, we're only talking 1.5 million for, for a sixth truck now with, with all the expense of the sixth truck, the gas, the fuel, the equipment that it takes to run all six trucks. So if you look back from, from eight years ago and what it was costing the county to what we're asking now, I think we're, I think we're really at a point where it is a win-win for, for both parties. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay.
I just, I just ask how far we're apart. It's 250, so.
Per year?
Is that per year for the first, first year?
Like I said, decision's obviously up to you and not me, but it's, it seems as though we're rapidly approaching the middle of what that final, those final numbers are. I haven't been presented with the final version anyway. I don't think one's been prepared, so one wouldn't be able to be signed tonight regardless.
Right.
So I think what you have available to you is a, understanding that you can approve the contract that's been presented or the contractual arrangement continued upon resolution of one, two primary financial details that can be ironed out tomorrow possibly. So, you know, this is something that can be approved in principle tonight with the final details to be formally approved as soon as possible.
Yeah, because I still have some questions just like that. So this is an annual fee of 1.250. Shall we prorate it for 10 years?
Ten months.
Oh, 10 months, okay. They even have their glasses on. Then, then this is, this is the, so what's the annual payment after, after that then? What's it go to an annual payment then?
Goes to 1.5 after, after year one. So first year's 1.25, which will be prorated based on when we get into the new station and then year two to year 10 would be the 1.5.
Okay.
Which includes the 300,000 that we're getting now. So we're, we're talking about a 1.2 addition.
And, and if I, if I understand this right, that 1.5 is all coming out of, or coming from the lit, right?
That's where I assume it's going.
Right, Steve.
I'm pretty sure.
Because, because your budget, your budget supplements this now, correct?
Not last, not this year, I need to report.
Yeah, in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And this is the same information that you presented to each of us individually, to the council members?
Yes, sir.
I believe the majority of them showed up, so.
I think we met with five of the seven, I think, as we met individually and shared exactly what we shared with you, the, the operating cost of the department.
I'll entertain a motion.
So counsel, so if we make a motion to approve, what's the, what's the narrative that we want to use to, to just make sure we have a little bit of, just a few days to go over these numbers?
I would characterize it as agreement in principle, continued upon finalization of contractual details.
I make the motion. I stand by counsel.
I'll second.
So I have a first and a second. Tomorrow, I believe, has Todd or Andrew been the lead on?
I believe it's been Andrew Skinner.
And he knows who he needs to talk to to get details hashed out, probably one or two little tiny details hashed out.
Yep.
Okay. So I have a first and a second for the agreement in principle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
So now legal getting hammered out.
You got it. Andrew, meet me in the room.
I'll find you after.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all, that's all I have.
Next order of business, I'm going to interrupt Steve and bring Debbie up here from Grants. Didn't get her added to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Debbie Bennett Steersman with Grants Development Department. And I apologize, I thought when things were tabled, they automatically carried over on the agenda and I didn't mention it, so appreciate you letting me come today. I'm here, you tabled two projects the last time we were here. I wanted to re-discuss those and maybe call for a vote if possible tonight. Then I've got a couple of other things. The first one was a Boonville Now Director. Boonville is supplying $30,000 and asking for a match from the competitive ARPA funds of $30,000 to hire a director for Boonville Now, which will improve the city's chances to regain the much-needed Indiana Main Street designation. And being in Indiana Main Street will open the county and the city up to much-needed future grants that could otherwise not be obtainable unless the community is at the Indiana Main Street status. Having an executive director also shows the Indiana Main Street organization the commitment of Boonville Now, Warwick County and the city of Boonville to acquire and maintain the Indiana Main Street designation. The core group.
Go ahead.
Okay. They asked for $30,000 and the core group recommended $30,000.
So I probably should have spoke up last meeting, but we were kind of rushing to get to the Lincoln Day Dinner, so I think Debbie already said it, but one of the important roles that Boonville Now plays is with that Main Street designation, that enables the city of Boonville and Warwick County to be eligible for grants that they otherwise would not be. And I can't sit here and name what those grants are this year, but in the past, the public facilities grants and some of the programs.
Hooker grants and DNR and Main Street.
Yeah, it's very, very important that Boonville Now get back to that Main Street classification and the administrator will definitely help. Matter of fact, one of the board members is already working on that. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Has Boonville Now, I mean, in the past, it's always been volunteer basis.
And I think that from what I understand, and I've worked with Boonville Now in the past, it was under the direction of some people that had time to do a lot of volunteer work and then I think it got overwhelming and those people moved on and there was new officers and the volunteering just is much, much harder now because they have full-time jobs. So they felt like if they had somebody just dedicated to doing the paperwork to keep the designation up and even making it higher would actually help.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And at the same time, the state of Indiana has restructured the Main Street program across the state and it's, it's much different than what it used to be.
Again, this is from the competitive funding, not the county's funding.
I think Boonville Now does a lot of great work for the, for the town, which, or city, which, which ultimately benefits Warwick County, you know, it is our county seat. I understand some of the, you know, Terry's been past president, he was very dedicated, very energetic and I think probably to get that Main Street designation, they, they need this, so I would, I would be in support of this. So I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
The second that you tabled the last meeting was the Boonville Country Club barn renovation and this was to do a renovation to the cart barn, cart barn. That includes mold removal, installing band boards, ceiling joists and decking above the ceiling, applying spray foam insulation on three walls and ceilings. Install two explosive-proof exhaust fans, install gas line and electrical wiring for the wash bay heater, install a hanging gas heater and dehumidifier, install a hanging plastic curtain on the east end of the wash bay. Install metal on the interior side of the cart storage area walls to allow for easier cleaning walls in the future. The project will meet the needs of Warwick County by providing a healthy environment for the cleaning, sanitizing and storing of golf carts after the use of the members and the public. It will also help improve the environment and keep the employees safe doing the work. They asked for $47,949. They're matching with $5,000 of their own. Core group recommended the $47,949.
Don't have a whole lot to add other than, I know, I know a lot of the members at BCC, so I want to support them. I'm a big golfer, so I don't, I don't go there a lot.
I think a lot of people in the community golf out there and I think, you know, to beautify it, help keep that course up. I can go along with this for the structure of the building, not necessarily for this COVID crap.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Terry, this is in your district. Is this something you want?
Yes.
Make second.
First and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, if I could proceed, I have three that I didn't get to that night because we went so fast, so I would like to bring those up as well. The next is Ohio Township Community Park. Ohio Township Park will be relocated at the relocated fire station and community center at 34, 33 Liberty Road. A new park will feature playgrounds, trails, meandering around a two-acre lot, lake, a very large splash pad, ball courts, open fields, shelter house with picnic areas and various other courts and fitness equipment. They're asking for $500,000 with a possible match of 10 million. The core group recommended the entire 500,000 and if you'd like to see more of the plans, I can pass this around so you can look at what the park's going to look like. I do know that, I believe, the Ohio Township trustee would like to have this money as leverage for a possible application to a ready grant funding to help fund the balance or partial balance of this park. And Chad Bennett is here and I'm sure he'd love to talk to you about it.
No.
Quick question on the subject. I think I forwarded an email to you that may have been another possible funding source. Did you see that email yet or, I'm not sure I forwarded it.
I didn't see it.
Make sure I send that to you. So, a couple of comments here from me. Before I saw the park and before I saw the plans, I wasn't sure that I would be in favor of $500,000 for Ohio Township, just to be honest with you guys. However, once I started to see the plans and how it was developing and seeing all of the other applications that came in, both the competitive side and the county side for ARPA funding, I truly believe this could be one of the most impactful developments in Warwick County in a long time. So that's my two cents.
My two cents is I don't think there's been any other projects that kind of have this kind of match. So they're, they're carrying the main load of this and if this is, helps them get something that will be, I think, kind of transformative for, for not only Ohio Township and Warwick County, but the region. You know, I see this parking news, they've asked Mike and Mike Wilson and Chad, you know, what, what do they think the, the numbers will be on a daily basis? And I've heard numbers, you know, five, six, 700 people. Friedman Park, you know, I don't think does those kind of numbers. So this, and, and, you know, the, you know, our last park we built cost us six, $7 million, not counting the building. So for, for $500,000, we get a $10 million park. I'll vote on that. I'll vote yes on that every day. So I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
The last two are to the same agency, TRICAP Warwick County Office. One of them is for additional needs at the head start. They actually need to get started on this pretty soon. They're doing plumbing and electrical for the classrooms. They're buying office furniture and they're using, going to also use for staff recruiting supplies and a vehicle that they need. They asked for $70,000 for this project and their match is 2,0091163. The core group posed back to them, could they do this project with $50,000? And we got a response that yes, they could do most of the project with the 50,000. So that is one project. I'm going to vote on them together. The second is to get technology and security at TRICAP locations. It's the safety of children and staff is a significant concern at all the schools. The Newburgh and Tennessean sites currently do not have camera systems in place. The requested equipment would complement the existing door lock system and help provide a solution to safety and security concerns. Computer technology at TRICAP's three locations in Warwick County, Boonville, Newburgh and Tennessean is out of date and lacks the computer security and storage capacity required for operations and employee production. The project will help to ensure that the computer technology needed to operate TRICAP business is available, up to date and built to last for years to come. They asked for $54,000. They have a match of 2,0051836. The core group also recommended 50,000 and they came back and said they could complete the project with the 50,000.
Make a motion to approve both projects.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, one, a couple of other issues. We, sorry, I'm trying to go fast, you cut me off the last. You approved $450,000 for our new EMA mobile command unit and we received bids, share receivers took bids for the unit and the unit came in over the 450,000 by $84,356.62. I, we asked, I asked Jake Greer. $84,356.62. I, we asked, I asked Jake Greer why. I didn't tell him I was doing this evening. I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you. But he gave an email that I sent back to you based upon the original 43,000 that he looked at, the original application. And time has since gone on. And I think it's been almost a year since we talked about this. This also includes outfitting it. And there is, let's see, the base unit was 508326. Then he wanted a mass camera system of $6,067. There's two types of radios. One is 1,038870, and the other is 18,57292. That's all of the equipment to completely outfit the unit. It came to $534,356.62. So I was asking tonight if we could obligate an additional $84,356.62 from contingency to the purchase of the unit. I've got.
So that's what we're voting on, is the 84,000? Or do we, we didn't originally approve the?
We approved the 450.
Okay, so also we're voting on?
It's basically a change order to add money.
For the change order because of price increase and some equipment? What the heck else hasn't gone up in this world?
I think he's afraid if we wait any longer, it's gonna continue.
Debbie, you said this would come from the contingency, my mistake.
Well, that's their choice, but that's what I'm saying. Correct.
Yeah, but, I mean, and that's, and the core group, you know, I think it was very wise to put a contingency in here just for these kind of reasons. So I think this is, did I make a motion to approve?
It's a lot of money until you need it. So I'll second it.
Well, how old's our trailer?
I have no idea.
20 plus.
20, yeah. So we get our money's worth out of stuff. So I feel like we'll get good use out of it.
I will say that they have said, you know, now that they can actually move this thing freely, that it will be more visible in the community. They'll take it to advance. It won't be used just in emergencies. It'll be a little bit of a PR piece, so.
Chad, will this fit in the building? Do you know? No?
I don't know the specs on it, but when you said Mobile Command, it'll be wrong for the trailer to the room.
I was worried about the height, not the length. Length will fit. Length would fit, wouldn't it?
Height will be okay.
I have faith, I have faith that Chad has some tin snips, so we could hold that building.
I believe I have a first and a second there, so all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I motion carries 3-0.
I have one last thing, and I don't know if this is proper at this time to bring this up, but we've submitted a claim for the Do Warwick Bucks program that Steve presented several meetings ago, that you approved to put 250,000 in. And we're, he's been working very hard with this committee to get this program up and running and actually be able to go by November 1, so we can make the November and December season. The claim has been held up for numerous reasons by the auditor, and we really needed the money and the account. We've already got several vendors set up, and we're not going to meet the date. The questions were about the language of the contract, procurement procedures, and payment in advance of services. And I spoke with the attorney. We've been through everything together. I noted that it was not on the payables, what you were approving. And I asked Heather, EFT is not even in the vendor system. The auditor said she had to vet it. And she was contacting the State Board of Accounts. So if I can get any help in getting this claim processed, I don't know what the procedure is to get the amount to EFT so we can get going with the program.
Full disclosure, I asked someone to bring this claim to the meeting this evening so that we can discuss it.
Okay.
Sorry. So, so my shoulders, I asked her to bring it. It's ARPA money.
Well, besides the fact that this program is used in other communities all across the state, Steve?
Yep.
Yes?
And this is also something we have a contract for, correct? So contractual services should be paid as manuals.
And there is a?
As I say, it's my understanding, they've already begun performing services for us in the, by way of managing a website. So there isn't an issue about advance of services right up to this point. They are performing services. This is a payment of those services for the continued services they provide.
So we can approve the claim?
As proposed, yeah, as requested.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the claim.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck to you.
We're way out of here. Next order of business is our county engineer, and I will.
County engineer has no business this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, anything?
Aye.
Nothing. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries 3-0.